Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the rule.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Joseph Campos.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Rachel Teal. Jay Hindler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have eight members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent any interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any item on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. We value your input. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get the facts and the opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the Thursday, May 20th, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes.
And second is?
Commissioner Lerman.
Second.
Okay, I believe was that Commissioner Lerman? Yes, okay.
Correct.
Terrific. Alright, so it's moved by Commissioner Myron, seconded by Commissioner Lerman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is a series of public hearings. The first item is a block grant, which is a request for the 2022 Community Development Block Grants. This is CDBG allocations. It is Master File BGAP 2021-003. And we will start with discussion from city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to introduce Angie Pittman. She's our block grant coordinator and has been for 14 years now. And I'm saying this because this is her last presentation before the Planning Commission, so she's going to go off to Happy Meadows and enjoy some retirement time. Prior to her tenure as CDBG coordinator, she was the admin assistant in our department. So total of roughly 18 years? Yeah, 18 years, so we'll turn it over to Ms. Pittman.
Thank you. Item that we have tonight is the CDBG grant cycle for our program year 2022. Just as a brief history, the CDBG program was enacted in 1974 by Title I of the Cranston-Gonzalez Act. It rolled eight competitive grants into one community development grant that was awarded by Formula. The purpose of the grant is to preserve and develop viable urban communities by expanding economic opportunities, providing decent housing, and creating a sustainable living environment. Part of the requirements for the CDBG program is that you have to have a HUD-approved five-year consolidated plan. Our plan was approved back in 2019 for program years 2020 through 2024. The goals and the strategies in that plan kind of outline what we're permitted to spend funds on. And then each year, we do an annual action plan supplement that lines out what we're going to carry out in that program year. And so this meeting tonight is the beginning of that process to gather information and figure out what we're going to work on for program year 2022. At the end of the program year, we also submit a consolidated annual plan evaluation report, or CAPR, that kind of measures our progress against what we said we were going to do in the annual action plan. And during this process, citizens' participation is mandatory and encouraged. So for 2020 and 2024, our goals are to increase and preserve affordable housing choices, community, neighborhood, and economic development, which covers pretty much everything in the middle, and then housing or homeless interventions and public services. So ones basically the physical residential improvements or increases. The rest of it's infrastructure, parks, buildings, and then public services that are carried out at those facilities. As the grantee, we can carry out this program any number of ways. The city itself can carry out the programs with employees and/or contractors. And we can award grant funds to sub-receipient that is a, what is it? Qualified nonprofit 501(c)(3) to undertake activities. And there's one organization, it's a CBDO, it's a specialized organization that, as far as I'm aware of, that we don't have in our area at this time. So that kind of limits us on who we can use. To select our activities for 2022, it has to meet a national objective of primarily benefiting low-to-moderate income persons in Pasco and that's defined at 80% of our area median income based on household size. It has to be an eligible activity that's defined in 24 CFR 570, meet one of the goals in our consolidated plan, meet our local priority needs, which are defined in Resolution 1969, and then we have to have a qualified applicant that demonstrates capacity to carry out the activity. And then if, depending on the complexity, we do some underwriting to determine whether or not projects are feasible, if they can continue with partial funding or if they have to have the whole block of funding in order to complete it because we don't want to give funds out and with no guarantee the prior year activity will get funded and then the project doesn't get completed. So Resolution 1969 designated the Planning Commission as the advisory board and established council policy regarding CDBG funding. Projects that were to be considered were housing, parks, community-sponsored recreation, infrastructure, basically focusing on the physical improvements, economic development, and removing substandard or hazardous conditions. It allowed for capital improvement of facilities that house social agencies, so public facilities improvements are eligible, but maintenance and equipment is not allowable. Social services such as health, education, and welfare are, according to this resolution, not allowable. So for 2022, we estimate $750,000. And that's based on our prior year on 2021, what was awarded then. So there were 11 proposals received and that included one that we don't actually receive an application for and it's the $200,000 that is earmarked for repaying the Section 108 loan. And so that came to 1.17 million approximately, so we have a deficit of about 421,000. And the requests were categories by our project types. Administration is generally limited to 20% of our entitlement. Public services is limited to 15%. Economic opportunities, we didn't receive any applications for that. We had one for affordable housing for 67.5. None for public facility improvements, which would be the buildings and the parks. Code enforcement, 100,000. Community infrastructure, half a million. And then the Section 108 debt service is 200.
And just as a reminder, the debt service is for the revitalization of Peanuts Park and the Farmers Market pavilions.
And this is just a graph breaking it down by project type. So the next steps are, the application deadline was May 28th. So this is the first of two public hearings and then at the end, your recommendations will be forwarded to city council workshop on the 9th of August and then council action on the 16th. Then we'll open the whole plan up for a 30-year, or 30-year, a 30-day public review period. And at the end of that, when we receive the actual allocation from HUD, the plan has to be updated and then submitted in IDIS.
That tells me to stop advancing slides and the next two applicants have a PowerPoint that we'll get to when it's their turn for testimony.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pittman, and we are grateful to you for stewarding the CDBG program and wish you the best of luck, but we're not done with you yet. I want to ask my fellow commissioners, do we have any questions or comments, staff? Anyone online whom I can't see?
It is Commissioner Cochran. I wanted to clarify, so there's a $421,000 deficit. How do we, how's that typically addressed just by narrowing down the number of proposals in the final mix? Is that, and that's what we're here to do over the next month or two in council?
Um, yes. Actually, we'll come back at the next meeting with a list of proposed projects for funding and narrow it down to what's available.
Gotcha. So this is the 1.171 million is the full list of applicants and then we'll eventually narrow that down to 750.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify and make sure I knew what the math was.
And I actually do have a question. So the Section 108 debt payment, that does, that is counted as a part of that?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. Alright. So with that, you are technically the applicant. You've already come forward? Or should we, should we go to the?
I would ask the audience, yes.
We will go to the audience. So going back to the list that we just had up a minute ago, how about we start with Habitat for Humanity? Your name and city of address for the record, please?
My name is Natalie Kirfman and the city address for our nonprofit is 313 Wellsian Way. Thank you for the invitation to present this evening. I'm submitting Pasco Home Affordability Project on behalf of Tri-County Partners Habitat for Humanity. I am joined by Executive Director Jet Richardson. Please bear with my pace as I try to respect the five-minute time recommendation for you. Next slide. This project will build in two locations, Cedar Avenue and Alvinas Street. There will be eight homes completed by December of 2022. Next. CDBG funds will be applied toward eight house trusses at $30,000, eight lumber packages at $25,000, and eight sidewalks at $12,500 for a total request of $67,500. Next. The project builds eight homes, serving 32 people, 13 clients below 80% AMI, 19 clients below 50% AMI, and 20 minority clients. Next. The three criteria for Habitat's homeownership program include falling within 30% to 80% AMI, the ability to pay the appraised value of Habitat home, and willingness to partner through sweat equity. Next.
And may I just interrupt you? AMI is average?
Oh, area median income, sorry. Unmet need. The current median house price in Pasco is approximately $318,000, creating an estimated house payment of $1,900 a month. I've included this Pearl Street example to show that these homes are not necessarily new or extravagant. Next. Federal government guidelines define that greater than 50% monthly income toward housing costs is considered a severe housing cost burden. Next. Using the $1,900 a month mortgage estimate, an 80% AMI Pasco resident would pay 52% of their monthly income on housing costs, falling directly into severe housing cost burden. Shifting to a 50% AMI Pasco resident, they would pay 83% of their monthly income on housing costs, creating a situation where the dream of homeownership is unimaginable. Next. Appraisal values are rising at insurmountable rates in Pasco. This Habitat home had an appraised value in May of 2019 at $201,000. Today's estimated appraised value is $250,000, creating a 24.4% increase on the very same Habitat for Humanity home. Next. To recap, affordable homeownership for 30% to 80% AMI residents is created. Two, reasonable mortgage payments are generated. And three, unreasonable home cost increases will be addressed by the grant. Habitat's project meets, oh, excuse me, next. Habitat's project meets the following community priority needs as defined by CDBG. I won't read them, but it's goal one, strategy one, objective two, and outcome two. Next. This project is a high priority ranking through neighborhood preservation and revitalization. Elements of the project include health, education, economic opportunities, beautification, community, and safety. Next. The project will meet successful benchmarks, eight persons served per quarter, 2022 construction schedule targets met, eight homes built, and a qualitative benchmark with the number of smiles observed by new homeowners. Projected budget is $220,800 with the CDBG funds joining in at $67,500. Next. Habitat maintains strong partnerships and funding streams. They are listed below and you can look at those later. Next. Pasco Home Affordability breaks cycles of generational poverty by providing new affordable homes to low-to-moderate income residents in Pasco. By combining Pasco CDBG with Tri-County Partners Habitat for Humanity, residents are provided a remarkable fighting chance at owning the place where they live and calling it home. Next. Thank you for your time, consideration, and funding.
Thank you. I just want to ask commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant?
Hi, applicant. This is Commissioner Cochran.
Please, Commissioner Cochran.
Yes, well, first of all, thanks for all you do at Habitat. It's a great organization. And I was curious about, I mean, one of the things that the $67,000 is going to go towards is trusses and lumber packages and you're going to try to do eight units with that. And is there, is there built-in inflation or have you got commitments on those? Or could those eight lumber packages and truss packages end up being three if the inflation and lumber prices keep going up? I'm just curious of how you manage the outrageous costs. I think lumber's 80% this year. And significant portion of your thing is lumber. So I'm just curious about how you guys manage that.
Sure. So we just wanted to differentiate that it is applied toward. So those amounts are just applied toward those things? Yeah, definitely eight house trusses are much more than $30,000 at this point today.
Yeah, no, I guess my curious, it'll go towards that, but if the lumber price keeps going up, the contribution will be decreasing, I guess is what you're saying.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
This is Commissioner Mendez. I got a question.
Another question. Apologies. Come up. Please, Commissioner Mendez.
Yeah, so I read somewhere that the applicants need to be, I think, US citizens or permanent residents. And I was just curious how you verify that. If you're required to verify, that would be the better question, I guess. Thank you.
That's a good question, which I'm going to defer to Jet Richardson.
Hi, I'm Jet Richardson. We do verify that in the application process for all of the Habitat homeowners that come through our program. It's not just a requirement for our affiliate that Habitat homeowners be permanent residents or citizens, but it's a requirement of Habitat for Humanity International. So it's verified at the application, at the time of application. Does that answer your question?
Any more questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple. Are your funds secured? Everything that you had in the budget, are those secured funds? Or do you have grant applications out for them already?
We have grant applications out everywhere we can find opportunities. The cost of the lumber, the materials cost is always something that we're concerned about and that are rising. But right now, we have cash reserves on hand to cover the project, at least for the first four houses and then we'll continue to raise funds for the rest.
Okay, so do you have then title on the property?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Alright, thank you so much for coming up. We appreciate your input. And next, we are going to go to the other applicant who has showed up today, I believe. Your name and city of address.
My name is?
Yeah, city of address, right? Yes.
My name is John Pad Vork. Address 8016 Babine Drive in Pasco. And I'm here as a city employee, senior civil engineer, to talk about the Lewis Corridor project from second to fifth. It's a really interesting project for us. There's a lot of work we've put into that downtown corridor recently and this will be the last little puzzle piece that'll really complete an overall big picture. Next slide. So as you can see on the screen, we've done some projects that I'm sure you've heard of, our Lewis Street Overpass project. That'll be on the east side of this corridor and then Peanuts Park is at fourth. So currently, the city will have put about $44 million between their funds and funds that they've secured between the Lewis Street Overpass project and Peanuts Park. And the corridor between them isn't improved yet, so it's, there's ADA compliance issues. It's fairly old, so the sidewalks aren't in great condition. And so what our hope is, is to connect the investment we've made at the Lewis Street Overpass and the investment being made at Peanuts Park and connect the dots and really clean up the rest of that corridor so that our two big investments aren't kind of isolated in an area that's not improved, but it connects and really creates a revitalized downtown all the way from Peanuts Park over to the overpass. So we feel that there's been a lot of investment already in our project. Will be really important in terms of tying together the themes of those, making a safe pedestrian-friendly place that people can exist downtown that's pleasant and good to be at. And it'll also help local businesses who've struggled through recent economic crises, especially then with the other construction projects going on. There's some concern that that would be detrimental in the short term in terms of, you know, construction activity out in front of their business and such, that our hope is to complete this project before the overpass is complete. So when everything is back opened up, there's a beautiful new downtown in front of all these shops that will really help them step up their game in terms of the number of people that choose to visit downtown Pasco. So currently, we have selected a consultant to do the design work and we have secured funds for the design. I believe we have some secured funds for construction as well. There's a few different concepts for what we would do downtown. There's been an effort to do some master planning of the downtown area. And when the consultants were interviewed, some of them presented graphics of concepts that might be like what we end up with. These haven't been through the stakeholder engagement process yet, which will be a really key part of our project. But they show generally the sort of after pictures that we might see in a few years. So there's a lot of things we can balance. There's, all the way from one, there's a certain width of corridor we have to work with and we can give more room to businesses for outdoor seating and such. We can improve bicycle safety on the road. We can improve parking. There's a lot of opportunities for not just, you know, kind of a facelift, but actually changing the infrastructure to benefit the community. So this is a rendering showing a fairly traditional multi-modal access. Next slide. This is a more pedestrian and business-friendly version where we shrink the road down and have additional sidewalk area for businesses to have outside seating and for people to have more outside enjoyment of that area. And next slide. And then there's also a version that prioritizes bicycle safety. That's one of our priorities in terms of city planning is connecting the dots between small projects we've done that have bicycle safety elements so that we have more continuous bicycle network through the city. So we'll be looking at that as well in terms of how to prioritize the project. Um, so we, we'll be looking at that as well in terms of, of how to prioritize the project. Um, and then regarding funding mechanisms, um, our project is also considered a high priority project in that it's a revitalization project and it also addresses ADA access issues for a lot of the stores downtown. Um, and we're really excited about this. Our hope is that it would be constructed uh, next year. Uh, design would happen this year and then we would construct it next year. Uh, that's our current schedule. Um, do you guys have any questions about the project?
Thanks and uh, uh, thanks for your presentation. Really exciting to see uh, the connection between the Lewis Street Overpass and Peanuts Park and, and uh, your addressing of the access issues. I think that's great. Um, the other funds associated with this project, are they primarily secured by the city or federal uh, dollars or other governmental dol- dollars?
I believe I know off the top of my head, but I'll double check really quick. Um, so we have other block development um, funds as well as state funds and then some local funds from Reaton's Art Stormwater Fund. And those are secured.
Great. Thank you very much.
Other questions from commissioners? For the applicant?
Uh, yes, hi. Um, so what are your next steps? What, what are you seeking? I'm, I'm kinda curious. What do you, what, 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 what can we do to help you?
Um, so the biggest thing for us is funding right now. Um, so right now we have funding for a good portion of construction and our design costs. Um, and so we're moving into the design phase and pursuing additional funding. Um, moving into the design phase will get a better sense for how much funding will be required. Um, we did a quick estimate uh, before getting consultant on board, just in-house. Um, and then we're hearing from a couple of different consultants that we interviewed that you know, there's a cost to do a sidewalk and there's a cost to revitalize downtown. And revitalizing downtown can be more expensive. Um, and so we're, we're trying to find additional funds so that uh, we can do something like these pretty pictures instead of just, you know, take a cracked sidewalk and fix ADA problems and then basically put back the same thing that was there. Um, we really want to have the, the ability to give the citizens what they hope for in terms of uh, really providing a neat downtown Pasco.
And who's the consultant who was picked?
McKay Spizito.
Great.
McKay Spizito.
So your ask is essentially the Pasco Neighborhood Business District Improvement? Great. Good to know. All right. So with that, thank you very much. I don't believe we have any more questions for you.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so we do not have. Oh, we do have one more applicant. Terrific. All right. Two, one? Okay, great.
Appreciate the opportunity to come for you guys once again. Um, COVID nineteen presented a real challenge that we ended up having to close. Oh, sorry, thank you. Steve Howland with the YMCA. Uh, the original address is one, two, three, four Columbia Park Trail. We're also over here at Pasco, uh, Martin Luther King Center at two oh five South Wee. Um, we were forced to close down during COVID like a lot of other programs. Um, we are actually reopening Monday. Um, we opened this week to a special soccer camp, trying to get kids back involved, get them physically active again, out of the classroom, out of the home, outside and, and playing again. The funding from the CDBG helps us to run this center, um, hands down. This program was started as a cooperation between the city of Pasco, United Way, and the YMCA. One of those legs, United Way with Drew from the funding, and so the Y's board has said, we are gonna keep running the center. Um, we tried to do some fundraising with it, but CDBG plays a real big part of this for us. It leverages about another fifty thousand. We use a lot of our internal funding because we believe in the program. We believe in the kids and we believe in the neighborhood. And after being here myself for eighteen years, it's been wonderful to see East Pasco change. Um, in a positive way. We've seen a lot more homeownership, a lot of families that are active, things like that. And one of the things that marked this past week when we did the soccer camp is we had a lot of non-East Pasco community residents come over. And I can tell you, my eighteen years running programs here, we've had a lot of resistance over the years. Parents from Richland and Kennewick would gap, don't wanna go there. And surprisingly, even West Pasco. This go around, we had a huge turnout with seventy kids from a variety mix, and that's really promising for us. But our focus is still the kids in that immediate neighborhood. And so the funding from this allows us to open the center after schools, have it open in the summer, as well as our athletic programs, things like that are offsite. Um, the funding that you guys have provided over the years has kept that door open with a minimal charge. Kids basically can join for ten dollars a year. Come in and have unlimited access to that center. And by kids, it's not just the young kids, it's also high school age and college age as well as families to be able to come in, workout, use the facilities, use the recreational programs, and have that safe place after school in Hertzmann Park. So with that, I'd like to see if there are any questions I might be able to ask.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thanks.
Doesn't, doesn't sound like we have any questions, but thank you so much for your time and your service. And next. Just your name and city of address. That's all we need.
Um, I'm Donna Tracy and I'm from the Arc of Tri-Cities. I'm very sad that Angie's leaving. She has been so helpful to us nonprofits. Um, I work, um, I am Donna Tracy from Pasco, nine nine oh four Pasco, Washington. But I work at the Arc of Tri-Cities originally. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Arc in the therapeutic recreation request. Uh, we serve individuals with developmental disabilities, autism, cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, a variety of disabilities. The Arc serves traditionally over um, a thousand individuals in a therapeutic year-round recreation service delivery. And these dollars allow us to um, be able to help and give scholarships and reduce costs to those who have little. Individuals who live in a group home, they only are given sixty dollars a month. That's for their bus pass. That's for their clothes. That's for, you know, to going out to McDonald's. They only get sixty dollars a month. So having low um, uh, funding to be able to help support them. During COVID, we shut down for about a month before people were calling us up and people were stop eating. And really families in crisis. And so we started doing individual one-on-one service delivery and going to parks um, and feeding ducks, just to help people get out and have that recreation. Um, when you have a cognitive disability or, you know, sensory issues, sometimes you just require that routine and the families needed help, so. Uh, we're now getting more robust. We're serving ninety-six kids in its camps and um, people are anxious to get out there and, and get, enjoy life, so. Um, we're asking for your funding and your support again. We appreciate you helping us. And allows us to be able to uh, give us some funding to help those who have little funds. Our, the individuals we serve are designated um, as recognized as low-income and disabled adults we target. And they come in a variety of our services throughout the year.
All right, thank you. So any questions from commissioners? I, I actually have one question. Do you, I, I know you serve the Tri-Cities as a whole. Do you have any idea what percentage of your uh, clients come from Pasco?
Oh. Um, I have to say, well, just, I just got through doing numbers for my summer camp and a third. So equal representation. Matter of fact, I would have to say that Pasco, right now, um, exceeds Kennewick. Um, so I don't know why, but that, a lot of people are coming out in Pasco.
Good to know. Good to know.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
So much. We've had a number of worthy applicants who've come up to speak. Is that it in the room? Angie? Yeah, Rick?
Do you wanna hear a brief rundown of the three, four city asks?
Why not?
Sure, they're very consistent with past years, of course. Uh, the three recreation specialists for the Civic Center, the Martin Luther King Community Center, the Senior Center, and then the fourth, the Code Enforcement Officer. These are all uh, people that are dedicated to the low to moderate income census tracts. So their services are entirely um, in those tracts. Meaning they primarily benefit low to moderate income people. So again, consistent with last, uh, well, consistent with almost every year that I've been here. Uh, the section one oh eight, I think we've talked about a lot. That was a twenty-year loan program actually approved by the Planning Commission several years ago. This is our first year though, that we have to pay, start paying it back. Um, and then the uh, CDBG Program Administration is a cost that i- isn't of course just salary, but it's supplies, uh, it, it's spread out, uh, uh, because there's um, quite a bit of city help that goes to Ms. Pittman and her efforts, including some of my time, some of uh, Ms. Webb's time i- in terms of administration, uh, supplies and um, various uh, special service or professional service requests that are required for the block grant program.
Thank you for that, Mr. White. Any questions, fellow commissioners? And uh, since I'm not hearing any discussion, we are now at the point where we open our public hearing. Um, so this is the time when any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, the CDBG block grants, um, or the applicants, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Not yet. Okay. Yes, Mr. White?
I, again, no action tonight is needed by the commission other than conducting the public hearing. This will return next month with a, a proposal from staff perspectives.
So I don't need to close the public hearing, is what you're saying? Then I will just leave it open. I've opened it and it will stay open then. All right. With that, so um, we will move on. We'll move on since I don't have to close that public hearing. Um, thank you, everyone who came to speak. And we are now going to move on to our next agenda item, which is also for a block grant. And this is uh, a request for um, the twenty twenty-two home fund allocations, MFBGAP twenty twenty-one zero zero four. And we will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Good evening. Um, the city of Pasco, uh, joined with Kennewick and Richland to form a consortium. Together, the Tri-Cities Home Consortium, it prepared our five-year plan. We worked together basically sharing information to kinda share the load. When I prepared this slide, this is what we had for estimated fun, entitlement funds that would be available for twenty twenty-two. However, um, I have received a recent slide basically saying we're probably gonna get about double that. But because of our um, down payment assistance program, the lag in being able to provide assistance, um, there's a purchase limit that kind of is a, a barrier for people to be able to use the down payment assistance program. So we estimate that we will probably, we'll try to do twelve down payment assistance loans. But anything over that, we would like to um, give to tenant-based rental assistance so we can continue helping people with rent utilities.
Terrific. Um, so commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for city staff? This is something that we, we get this request year after year. All right, um, so.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Oh, Commissioner Lerman, please.
I have a question about how many um, residents per each home? About how many total Pasco residents would be able to benefit from these twelve um, DPA projects? Rental assistance.
The down payment assistance program is for purchasing homes. Um, as far as how many people, I'm not sure. It's all based on household size. As far as the tenant-based rental assistance, I don't have, um, I don't have any numbers yet. I think that we're lagging a little bit behind the other two cities in using the current funds, however. Um, our partner who is um, carrying out the program with the CARES Act, they kind of, they kind of think that we can use these funds, that we can continue long-term. There's not a um, a hard deadline on these. I mean, except for the ones that we put on ourselves. Like last year, we said we would carry it out through December. And then we would look at it in December and decide whether or not to carry it on based on need. And so from what we hear, that's where our greatest need is.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Campos. I have a question.
Please, Commissioner Campos.
Yeah, just, just curious. How many applications do we get for the down payment assistance? I know we, we wanna propose twelve and, and get that, but how many do we normally get a year?
In the past, before the housing prices went sky-high, we were probably doing twelve to twenty-four a year. Um, last year, I think we did three. So um, we have contingencies in the home annual action plan that also allows us to move funds from a project that isn't moving forward to be able to use it someplace else. It's just that we didn't want to leave the down payment assistance program without any funds since we still have a lot of people calling and asking about it.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Lerman with another question.
Please, Commissioner Lerman.
How um, how does residents learn about the um, the down payment assistance program? What methods of outreach does the city use?
Um, Michelle usually does a, a marketing campaign and she just did one recently for the tenant-based rental assistance. We have put this information on our Facebook page. Roseanne has uploaded it wherever code enforcement is. Um, word of mouth and of course, there are our partners that have been working with us over the years, so pretty much they know that the program exists. Or if they search for assistance, they'll find our name on the website and then um, come and ask if they can get approved, cause they know it's, it, they're recommended by their um, lenders and real estate agents a, as well.
Thank you.
Did you wanna add something?
Um, we put out, we put an advertisement in the Tri-City Herald last year also, trying to spur activity.
And Mr. Gonzalez, were you gonna say something?
Oh, with regards to the average household size, uh, I believe the twenty eighteen Office of Financial Management estimates was about three point one or three point two. Uh, historically, I think one of the higher household sizes across the state.
Okay, thank you for adding that. So are we? Please.
This is Commissioner, I got a question.
Hi, Commissioner Mendez, please.
Uh, yeah, on the, I guess I have the same question for the tenant-based rental assistance. How many um, applicants did the, the program serve last year? Uh, I know there was a, an eviction moratorium. I wonder if there any kind of impact to the numbers that were, uh, people that were assisted with that. Thank you.
I don't have the exact number that were served at the top of my head. But I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to eleven households.
And what was the average assistance?
The amount, I don't have that either. That program is being run through Ri- Richland, City of Richland as the um, lead agency. And CAC do that and I get reports every once in a blue moon, but I can definitely look that information up and bring it back at the next meeting, or Rick can.
That would be very, that would be very helpful to have. So I'm assuming with this recommendation, you don't need us to do anything until the next meeting? All right. So hearing no other questions, seems we can move on to our next item, which is a Seems we can move on to our next item, which is a. Request for a block grant. This is the annual action plan amendment. CDBGCV two and its master file twenty twenty zero zero six. We will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Okay, now these were awarded in different order. Um, all tranches of the CB, CDBGCV funds. Um, or authorized by the CARES Act. So they have the added requirement to. Prep- uh prepare, prevent, or respond to COVID nineteen and also because they are disaster funds. They have an added requirement to ensure that there's no duplication of benefits. So we were first awarded, um. Oh gosh, I think it was in March or April of last year, the CB one award uh funds and those were awarded towards. Business assistance, um the four hundred and thirty-four thousand of that, there is a hundred and eighty-four remaining. Um, and I think just recently, the CB three funds went through and. Four hundred and fourteen of that were awarded to emergency assistance, which is the same as tenant-based rental assistance. Today, we haven't received those funds from HUD and so those funds have not been spent yet. We ha- don't have authorization to spend them yet. And then through the State of Washington Department of Commerce, HUD has also been pushing through the tranche for CB two. Which is a hundred and forty-five thousand of that, um we're limited to five percent for admin. And it can be used for um any activity that's already proved or contingent activity. To keep them going, or it can be put on a new project, but then it has to go through this public process. Yeah, the um CB three funds were, uh, it was called emergency assistance, but that was um for utilities. Um, it's eligible for for rent mortgage for low to moderate income households. So those are the types of activities that are eligible for the CDBGCV funds. And actually, anything that's eligible for CDBG under twenty-four CFR five seventy. Um, with the exceptions or with the added re- um requirements that it re- prevent, prevent? Prever- prepare for or respond to COVID or and not have any duplicated benefits.
Okay, so one of my questions, none, what you're saying is that none of this can duplicate what's already happening like through the CDBG. Funds.
What it means is that if we give out business assistance grants and there's other grant funds. That is being given to business assistance grants, we have to make sure that they don't get.
Double dip.
Exactly. So it just kind of really slows down the process and um.
But if there are any applicants to the block grants, would they be eligible for things that we don't, we're not able to pick up? From that through this?
Not unless they can meet those two requirements at the bottom. That's the tough part. It's like, yes and no. Yes, it it's eligible, but doesn't meet the requirement for the CARES Act funds.
Gotcha. Okay, that's a good clarification. Uh commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? For city staff? Okay, and there is no public hearing that needs to be opened. Or is there? Oh, there is a public hearing that needs to be open. I I look to, I look to staff for help on that. Alright. So I just wanna say, any individuals who wish to speak on behalf of this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Okay, no one is coming forward. Just wanted to make sure I left that open. Alright, so with that, we do see the discussion that you're interested, that is ultimately you want us to have. Um, but this is something that we will see again next session, but not with Ms. Pittman.
No.
Okay. Mr. White, what are you gonna have us do with this? The next session?
We just, oh, you mean next month?
Next month, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll continue. We'll propose the same. We we don't have a lot of, there's not a lot of flex here. Uh, we just propose pretty much what you're seeing right now.
Okay, alright.
We there, and I I just wanna add, um, there. There is a, there is a lot of funding for response to COVID, um, a lot and um. Luckily, the 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 latter grants to communities and ca- and the county is also uh getting uh funding. But uh luckily, it's been extended out till the end of twenty-three or twenty-four. Twenty-three, so we're, at least we have a couple of years, uh, which is very, very helpful.
Good, that's good to know. Gosh knows we'll be feeling the effects of this for a long time. Alright, thank you very much for that and um I'm gonna move forward to the next and. Last of the public hearings, this this item is a request for a code amendment. Um, this is access for accessory dwelling units, HB nineteen twenty-three, master file CA twenty twenty. Dash zero zero three, which we have heard a lot of at this past several meetings. Um, city staff?
Uh, thank you and good evening, planning commission members. Uh, this staff report uh addresses comments received at the May planning commission meeting. Along with updated staff recommendations for the proposal. Uh, just as a quick mention, this is the third. Uh, presentation from staff on this particular item. We've had two workshops, one in December of twenty twenty and last month. And uh this is the last item of three action items the city is pursuing related to House Bill nineteen twenty-three to increase residential building capacity. Uh, this proposal would allow detached accessory dwelling units in the city. So on the next slide, uh, just a few, um, this is the proposal itself. On the next slide. Uh, a few uh highlights of the uh benefits for accessible dwell- dwelling units. Uh, they offer uh opportunities for residents who desire more flexible option for housing. While also providing a homeowner with an opportunity to have a family live on the same property. They are seen widely seen as benefits due to their lower costs and affordability, the flexibility and variety for potential residents. Entry level housing and enables families to expand beyond their primary, primary home. This is a guide from the AARP. On the next slide, uh refer back to community and stakeholder interest. Um, ADUs are a response for the growing need for more housing uh across the country, especially here locally. And the uh, uh, this proposal addresses uh both that and the interests expressed by community members and home build stakes, home builder stakeholders. Uh, fifty-five percent have strongly agreed with allowing ADUs in the city. Uh, sixty-five percent support or strongly support zoning changes for housing supply uh increases. And there's a sixty-one percent support or strongly support allowing the market decide, which again, we we think this does as well. Uh, we have, this is a public hearing. We've received two uh comments in support of this proposal, one via email. And one verbal uh via phone call. And also, right before the meeting, pulled up a few additional numbers, a a report on the rental market across the country. Listed the tri-cities as the sixteenth most competitive market for rental housing choices. We have a ninety-seven percent occupancy rate. That's higher than many. Larger metropolitan areas across the country. And a recent report from Freddie Mac in May. Indicated that uh the total housing gap in the country increased from two point five million in twenty eighteen to three point eight million. Um, as of May, so obviously an increasing housing crisis across the entire country. And the next slide um summarizes the uh what we currently permit in the Pasco municipal code on the table below. With what was required and mandated of nineteen twenty-three. And the twenty thirty, twenty-three forty-three House Bill that was adopted enacted by the legislature in twenty twenty. Which turned those mandates into optional, but we have to uh pursue at least one of those options. Uh, I do note above that staff uh has discussed and uh confirmed an amended contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce. Which amends our original contract to comply with nineteen twenty-three's mandates. And affords us some additional flexibility in case uh planning commission or council. Uh, moves uh uh or adopts a alternative version of this effort. So on this slide, and apologize for the the small font on this, this is uh also in the staff report, um, and in the uh, the draft ordinance for your review. Uh, this is a table uh identifying the regulations and criteria with our updated recommendation and a brief rationale. And I'll just highlight a few of these for your uh, for your review this evening. And the first one is the attached and detached ADU permissions. We are proposing to allow one of each. When the design development and lot standards can be met. Uh, again, we already allow attached accessory dwelling units. So this would simply be allowing a detached unit, again, uh that they can comply with the uh rest of the design standards in the code. Or those that are added for this proposal. On off-street parking requirements, uh, we have proposed to eliminate off-street parking requirements for those residential dwellings that were. Completed before nineteen seventy and the particular reason for that is that was when the subdivision ordinance, which required off-street parking went into effect. And so all of the units built before nineteen seventy don't have parking because they weren't required to. Uh, there's another, uh, it looks like it's cut off there, but the second bullet point would read that uh there would be elimination of. The parking requirement for a ADU within a quarter mile of a public transit facility. And then also a provision for uh not requiring the parking spot when the. Construction of the actual parking pad itself would make the, basically make the lot. Infeasible for an ADU construction. In that case, that's where you'd have more space allocated for a parking spot than than a home itself. And then uh with the rest of the lots, AD uh the parking would be uh required as it is today. Now, on this particular uh criteria, we did have discussions with our code enforcement. Because they do deal with uh parking uh challenges and concerns and complaints from the community. They had recommended that either we completely eliminated for their own sake, uh in terms of identifying a a clear. Barrier of when parking is required and not, um, or try to simplify the language. So we'll, we'll try to do that, but obviously based on comments and and um. Input from the planning commission and community this evening. On the owner occupancy requirements, uh staff again recommends that we remove that requirement. Right now, there's an eight-month. Owner occupancy requirement for attached accessory dwelling units. And I think as we mentioned before, we're not entirely sure. Uh, for the the justification of that. Um, how however, the owner occupancy requirement does restrict the availability of housing. Um, and the lessens the flexibility for the homeowner uh to construct the ADU in the first place. Um, we are also adding additional language that would uh restrict the ADU for. Uh, short-term or vacation use, uh so that would be your uh your VRBOs, your Airbnbs, et cetera. Many communities have done just that. Uh, staff also has a separate uh code amendment, uh, uh, can going through internal evaluation for short-term rentals. Which would fo- further uh refine this specific regulation. Uh, but we believe with what we have in the code today. Restricting it to long-term living uh would be enough uh to suffice that. Um, and then you see on the next uh uh table, there are short-term rentals would be restricted uh for ADUs. And and that would also hopeful, hopefully address the comments and concerns we heard at the May meeting with regards to. Concerns for noise, safety, and additional neighborhoods that would eliminate, uh hopefully eliminate that uh situation. We also heard comments regarding specific design standards for ADUs and at the time of this meeting in May, we had proposed. Uh, requiring that an ADU would meet the residential design standards. However, after that meeting, we've met a. Phone call with the Department of Commerce and uh conducted some additional research and uh rather than that requirement, we are proposing. A a separate set, a separate set of design standards that are intended to be complementary. To the primary dwelling, but not the exact same. So not to be the uh to mimic, un- unless that was the choice of the the uh the homeowner or developer. And that would apply to windows, uh uh color, um, uh framing, roof pitches, angle of the roof, et cetera. There would also be additional uh uh regulations that mandate the uh a height, uh backyard coverage, et cetera, which you see. Uh, below, the height would be limited to that of the primary dwelling or twenty-five feet, whichever is less. That was seen pretty commonly across other, other jurisdictions. And then the maximum unit size there in the middle. Uh, we recommend that an ADU uh would be allowed up to one thousand square feet or fifty-five percent of the. Primary dwelling unit size, whichever is less. On the uh, this slide, we see um existing unpermitted ADUs. We have quite a few of them in the city. And while we're not able to entirely address those with this proposal, we do believe this begins to allow for that to occur. Uh, if if the homeowner or ADU resident determines that's in their best interest, obviously, we would certainly encourage that. And now we at least have. A uh regulation for them to comply with, whereas right now we do not. Um, we have additional language for rear yard coverage, the amount of space a dwelling could take up in the backyard. Uh, another uh item for the bedroom limit, we don't specifically mandate a maximum bedroom limit. But the size of the ADU itself, along with the existing housing and building code regulations on bedroom. And living size would 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 be in place here to ensure that there's a safe living space uh for an ADU. And then uh you see a role for utility servants requirements, uh which uh states that they would be uh required to. Uh, connect to the primary dwelling uh other than a telephone, internet service, et cetera. And again, those, those are all pretty standard across ADU. Regulations in in the country. So on the next slide, um, you may notice that in the staff report and in the draft ordinance, uh beyond what was discussed this evening. There's significant language with regards to fire code, building safety, housing, et cetera. The housing codes which are in our own uh municipal code. And although our uh building official certainly um. Was pleased to see that language in the staff report, uh he had recommended that rather than put it in the, in the code, which can sometimes be confusing. Um, that we do what other cities have done, which is create an actual ADU design guide, uh which would be available online and obviously for folks that come here to city hall. Uh, and there'd be sort of a pamphlet or a or a detailed FAQ of sorts. So folks can understand what it takes and what are the requirements for accessory dwelling units in the city of Pasco. Many cities have gone through this extra effort and it's shown to be a benefit. Uh, not only for customer service perspective, but certainly for the actual construction of ADUs because there's an actual guide to follow. So. Staff would pre- staff would follow up the proposal with the creation of a simple handbook or guidebook for residents to have. Um, uh at their use. And you can see this example from the city of Tacoma, which talks about the design, roof pitches, window placements, et cetera. So uh our recommendation today a- as a public hearing is to uh continue the public hearing. Uh, this is the first time the planning commission and public have seen the draft ordinance in its entirety. We would like to take some additional comments. And then come back to the planning commission in July with a recommendation. Uh, the environmental determination was that of the non-significance that was issued in late uh May. And with that, that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, commissioners, do we have any questions?
Jacob, so um. Is it sixty percent? That includes the original residents plus the ADU?
You are referring to the the rear yard coverage?
Yeah.
That is, I um, that e- each lot has a specific rear yard coverage that is. Is already identified based on where the primary dwelling is placed. And so when a potential applicant comes to city hall or or applies for a permit. For an ADU, we would have to ensure that the size and placement of their ADU does not exceed that threshold.
Okay.
So it's kind of a geometry diagram.
And and of course, side yard, rear yard setback requirements still apply.
Correct, absolutely.
I mean, if you got twenty-five percent rear yard requirement, uh that's still gonna, that's gonna be part of what they have to look at, how they gonna. Preserve that, is that right or not? Are you gonna be able to encroach on that? Are you gonna be able to encroach on that?
No, uh, setbacks, uh, will still be very much applicable, just like they were with any other dwelling in the city.
Yeah, one other, one other question in part might not have a take here, but the residential requirements for parking, general, generally speaking, are two per unit. J- throughout the city, right, you know, roughly. So if you put an ADU, uh, on, on, uh, an existing residential unit, you're gonna have to provide two more cars?
N- no, staff is proposing that there would for most lots, uh, that are either constructed before nineteen seventy, um, lots within a, uh, quarter mile of a public transit facility or lots where the construction of the parking pad itself would basically leave no room for the ADU, would not, uh, be required to dedicate the off-street parking requirement. Now, the existing ADU requirement for attached dwellings requires one off-street parking spot per unit.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good. Yeah, alright, thank you.
Any other Commissioners want to ask questions?
This Commissioner Compos.
Commissioner Compos.
I don't have a question, just have a comment. Uh, just want to thank city staff for, uh, bringing back and answering all the questions. I know the last time that we met, we did have quite a few concerns. I know I did, that's why I had a few of them. Um, and with these new recommendations, you've answered every single one, so I just want to say thank you.
Great, so, um, I believe we have people, oh, one more question, sorry?
Uh, yeah, so it's, uh, I just want to clarify. So short-term rentals of ADUs is not permitted according to this. Does that mean that long-term rentals are permitted and how you define long-term rentals?
So short-term rentals, t- today isn't an actual regula- uh, regulatory item in the Pasco municipal code. So, uh, with this proposal, we would be restricting ADUs for long-term residential living and a long, and, and a rental would certainly comply with that. I'd, I'd have to check to see what our existing language is for, for rental units, al- although I'm certain we already have that because of our rental inspection program that's operated here at the city. So we, we do have references for that, but we would not, uh, we are proposing that we do not allow ADUs for short-term in the sense of Airbnb vacation rentals. There may be a benefit for tourism, but that certainly decreases the supply for, for residential, um, use, uh, use, usage.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Okay, even though we will be continuing this till the next meeting, I am going to ask any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item. Um, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please, um, state your name and just the city of address for the record, Mr. Campbell.
My name is Ron Campbell. I live at four thirty South Sycamore in Pasco. And coming here tonight has been very helpful. And, uh, Jacob Gonzalez has answered most of my questions. But I do have, uh, one, one question for you guys on this ADU. Most, all ADUs are usually detached or, or attached to the, the property, the, the owner's property. Now, I have a scenario. I have a lot that's forty-five feet, six inches wide, a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. It sits on a corner. Now, it's four foot, let's see, it's four foot, six inches short from having a full lot to be able to build on that lot. But yet I have another six feet to the sidewalk that's in the right of way. Now, would I be able to, uh, put an ADU on that lot?
I, I think without reviewing the actual lot itself, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
It's fifty-seven hundred square feet.
Well, we aren't, we aren't proposing minimum lot sizes for accessory dwellings, detached or attached, simply that they comply with the, uh, the, the lot dimension standards.
Okay.
So setbacks, height, et cetera. But no minimum lot size.
No minimum lot size? Okay, but I, my question is, what would I do with that lot? And I have that lot, paying taxes on that lot. Now, what am I? Uh, is the city gonna let me?
Is there a house on the lot now?
So what now?
Is there a house on the lot?
No, it's just land.
It's a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot.
Okay, well, that, I don't know that we're gonna get there with this proposal, but I would welcome Mr. Campbell to talk to staff and see what can happen. There's provisions for using, uh, lots that were, uh, existing at the time subdivision code was enacted. Uh, there's, there's probably a couple of different options for trying to see what we can come up with.
Okay, alright, well, thank you.
Did that help? Okay, and hold on.
Yes, go ahead.
It's, it's forty-five feet wide?
It is, yeah, yes.
And a hundred and how?
Hundred and twenty-five feet deep.
Forty-five, a hundred and forty-five feet deep?
Hundred and twenty-five.
I was getting in my mind what's going on, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay, thank you, I, yeah, thank you. I think you can do something with that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Any other questions?
No, sounds like that was the only one. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Alright, well, I will not close the public hearing because we are gonna be continuing, um, on with this at the next meeting. Um, I will not strike the gavel, even though that is one of the most fun things that I get to do at every, at any meeting. Um, I believe that actually ends our section of public hearings. Um, we don't have anything under workshop. We don't have anything under other business. So I believe that actually brings us to our adjournment. Um, so once again, I'm just gonna say thank you to Ms. Pittman. Um, thank you for your service. Good luck on this next phase. And, um, if there are no further questions or comments, I recommend that we adjourn our meeting. So with that, nine, I'm sorry, seven forty-seven? Good night, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for coming, thanks for your participation.
Night, you.